All right, we're reconvening to open session. And first order of business in the business session is conduct reorganization of the board. Item A is elect the president. Any nominations for president?
I would nominate John Dab.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Got to do it three times. All right.
You need a second for that?
I'm not sure.
None of them have signed me as a...
No, yeah, I didn't think so. So, hearing none, all is in favor of John Dab and his president? Say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Next item is elect vice president. Any nominations for vice president?
Somebody else wants this job?
I will not.
You're entitled, you're welcome if you'd like it.
I nominate Leo.
Any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations? Hearing none?
My gratitude shows no bounds.
All is in favor of Leo as vice president of the board? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Leo is elected. Item C, elect clerk of the board. Any nominations?
I nominate Tracy Lenz.
Any other nominations for clerk? All right, seeing none. All is in favor of Tracy as clerk? Say aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Tracy as clerk. Item D, elect treasurer of the board. Any nominations for treasurer? Then nomination Kathy McGrath. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All is in favor of Kathy as treasurer? Say aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Kathy is our treasurer. All right, next item, report from student representatives and student recognition.
We'll do a little student recognition tonight. Being as we had to reschedule some ballgames, coming up with student representatives got a little dicey this month. So, recently, state solo ensemble was held on the weekend of May 6th over on Stevens Point. Christopher Shields took first place, or received the first place, I shouldn't say took first place, received a first-place rating on saxophone. Megan Shields received the first-place rating on clarinet. Dulce Bang and Megan Shields received a second rating on clarinet as a duet. Megan Shields received a first rating for musical theater, so that'd be vocal. And in the vocal solo, Megan also received a second rating. And Julia Pfefferkorn in a vocal solo received a second rating. So, congratulations to those students who went on and went to state solo ensemble. We also have math league results. Our team finished third out of 19 schools this year. Katie Labarge took third-place honors in the algebra category. And Christopher Shields capped his high school career off with a first-place finish in the advanced math category. So, congratulations to our math league students. This weekend, actually leaving tomorrow morning, Christopher Shields, Jacob Lang, Isaac Goodmensen, Trent Niprath, and Jude Goodmensen are leaving for the national chess tournament. They've played with Nikusa over the years, but have also, we've dabbled in some chess club things at the high school, but those are all of our students. They're leaving tomorrow morning and they will be back on Tuesday. They're going to Nashville, Nashville, Tennessee, in the national chess tournament. Also, our sophomore class has been doing a fundraiser for Scarlett Griffith. They've been doing a, basically, a cash collection. And I want to say, is it about 12, 10 staff members put their names out? 10 staff members put their names out and said that if they had goals, that if the sophomore class could raise a certain amount of money for each of those pairs of staff members, they paired off, they'd get pied. And then I Too, there's an overall goal that if the entire group met, that I Too would be there. One recommendation I gave to Ms. Kleifkin was to see if we could procure some earplugs, because I'm going to tell you, pie, that gets in your ears, I've had this happen, so I've been pied before, really difficult to clean out. And I'm pretty confident we're all getting pied. And I think that'll be on Monday, so the sophomore class has done that as well. Next week, on Wednesday evening, is our senior dessert, where we honor our seniors with scholarship awards and other recognitions, capping off their senior year. And so, we're looking forward to that. We are still in the process of determining at the moment whether the drama club will be putting on the variety show on the 19th. They're still working out the final details. They may, just depends on how some things fall, whether they'll be able to do that or not. But it typically held, their last few years held the variety show. I know they're trying, but may not work out this year. But they're trying, so. And then, lastly, graduation on the weekend of Memorial Day, in the afternoon at 2:00 on that Sunday. And this year, it will be held in the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium. Just our student recognition, some of the things going on, so.
All right, thank you. President's report. All board members are in attendance. And our next board meeting is June 14th, and then July meeting is July 19th. And the next item is a couple of proclamations that we have to read. Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, a proclamation. Whereas school nutrition employees provide nutritious, well-balanced, reasonably priced meals to more than 500,000 Wisconsin schoolchildren each day, and whereas meals prepared and served by school nutrition employees may significantly enhance the student learning environments, allowing children to concentrate on graduating with the skills and knowledge they need to be successful in the workplace or towards further studies, a primary goal of every child to graduate, college and career-ready. And whereas school nutrition employees creatively nurture partnerships with parents, teachers, community groups, and governmental personnel to promote the nutritional values of their programs, and whereas school nutrition employees provide a caring, respectful school food service environment, therefore, be it resolved that I, Tony Eaver, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 5th, 2017, a School Nutrition Employee Week. And the next proclamation is for Money Smart Week. Whereas the state of Wisconsin recognizes personal financial literacy as an essential element of a complete and balanced education for all students, and whereas students today face financial choices that have expanded well beyond what their parents or grandparents dealt with as teens and young adults, and whereas the economic stability of our communities and resulting growth of our state's economy will be influenced by the personal financial literacy skills our students gain during their school years, and whereas high-quality personal financial literacy education involves a wide range of partners, including educators, business and civic leaders and organizations, and local, regional, and statewide organizations, and whereas personal finance requires an interdisciplinary approach over a student's educational career and beyond to best prepare tomorrow's citizens for difficult financial decisions ahead. And whereas during this week, we encourage everyone in Wisconsin to promote the role that personal financial literacy education has in producing engaged, successful, college and career-ready students, therefore, be it resolved that April 22nd through the 29th, 2017, be declared Money Smart Week in Wisconsin. All right. Next item is administrative reports.
And just to let you know, our school nutrition employees, we did treat them to, give you a cake, got them a coffee over at Cravings and making sure we let them know that they were appreciated, so, for the hard work they do. The May 12th in-service, this year, on May 12th, we're going to have a presentation to both the elementary staff and the high school staff from our student information system provider, which will be into our campus for next year. They will be coming in and working with our staff, showing them the highlights of the program, basically giving them their first look at how the program's going to work, and working with the staff for a few hours during the morning. We also have a session on financial literacy for the staff that VA member benefits will provide to the staff who are interested. And our staff will also be working on their educator effectiveness, end-of-year wrap-up, wrapping up their student learning objectives, and those pieces, getting those things finalized so we can complete the evaluation processes. So, that's, makes for a pretty full day on May 12th. Graduation, as I mentioned before, will be the last Sunday in May. It will be 2:00 in the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium. We are working on the details of how we are going to make graduation work in that space, but as longtime custodian John Buchholz pointed out, until 1965, they were all in the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium, probably. So, we're kind of excited, actually, to do this maybe a little differently. So, one thing we'll need to know from board members is who's planning on being there at some point, so that we can make the proper arrangements. So, the sooner Lisa Miller and I are able to get that information, the better. And just kind of as an aside to graduation being in the Dorothy Alexander site, the flooring company started laying oak boards and then new, the oak floorboards today. So, they are moving at a lightning pace to get that taken care of in the big gym, so. So, that's basically it. Short report.
All right, report on Boys and Girls Club. Principal Christie.
At Port Edwards Elementary, we are fortunate enough to have a Boys and Girls Club program on-site here after school every day. And I invited Kent Anderson here, he's the executive director of Boys and Girls Club, to talk to you a little bit about what Boys and Girls Club does and why we are so lucky to have them.
So, most of the information I'm going to share with you is going to be on the PowerPoint here. Kara asked me to come share some of the updates on the Boys and Girls Club lately, so thank you for having me tonight. The club out here has been, seen tremendous growth over the past three to five years, and we're really fortunate to have wonderful staff out here that are working well with the school. And Kara and her staff do a fantastic job of accommodating us, so. So, this is our mission for the Boys and Girls Club, to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. We are an after-school program that we are going to take any child that needs the after-school care. We have a summer program that we also run during, a 10-week summer program at our pitch unit. But really, we're here for whatever kid that needs, needs the after-school time. The next one. These are our three priority outcomes, academic success, good character and citizenship, and a healthy lifestyle. So, all the programs that we run fall under one of these umbrellas. So, you know, in the academic success, we do homework help, we do what we call high-yield learning activities, which are fun educational activities that are hands-on and hopefully the kids enjoy it, but also learn something at the same time. Our good character and citizenship pillar is about teaching kids to be good people, you know, learning about, give back to your community. We've done some community service projects. And then our healthy lifestyle is pretty explanatory. You know, we try to get our kids active as much as we can, provide some nutrition education for them, and get them to understand what it's like to lead an active, healthy lifestyle, far beyond the years they'll spend here in the elementary school. This is just a bit of the numbers from our overall organization, what we've seen in 2016. Served just over 1,400 registered members, almost 200 outreach, gives us a little over 1,600 kids that we serve in the Southwood County area. In case you're not familiar, we have a site at Meade Elementary School in Wisconsin Rapids. We have our pitch site, which is at the old Pitch Elementary School building, and then this site, and then Alexander Middle School in Nikusa. So, that's collective from all four of our sites. So, this is kind of the growth over the past five years out here in Port Edwards. This is specifically to Port Edwards. So, our registered members are on the left there, and average daily attendance is on the right-hand side. So, you can see the growth over the last five years, and I think a lot of it has been attributed to some of the staff and working with the school to be able to just kind of help transition from the school day to after-school and help reinforce some of the stuff that's going on during the school day. So, 105% increase in our registered members and 83% in our average daily attendance, and that really is probably some of our biggest numbers for all of our sites in perspective from our organizational standpoint. So, really happy with those numbers, and I think we still have some continued growth opportunities out here yet, so. Just kind of a comparison here between our organization statistics and then Port Edwards specifically, so, you know, free or reduced lunch is pretty close with our members, single-parent households. And then the income levels, you can see there. You know, our model for the Boys and Girls Club is to provide an affordable place for all kids, and the reality of it is we have a lot of underserved kids that attend the club, and we're never going to turn a kid away. So, we have opportunities for some assistance if families are in need, and ultimately, if they can't pay anything, we'll still take them and we'll find a way to make up that cost internally. Some numbers from, this is, excuse me, from the beginning of this year, so 2016 there. So, we've served 5,000 snacks out here already this year since the beginning of the school year, and 100 kids have got, our Power Hour is our homework help, and then some of the other programs. Net Smarts is a computer program that the National Boys and Girls Club has given us, and basically teaches kids how to go on the internet, how to be safe, what to look for, you know, some danger areas to avoid. So, you know, we've had about 40 members go through that, and majority of them are, close to the majority of them are improving those skills when they take that program. We have a requirement for all of our kids to go through the Net Smarts program before we let them on the computers, because we all know the dangers of letting young people on the computers, and to be able to kind of provide some insight to them about what's safe, what's not safe is important. So, and then also music and STEM. You know, those are some areas that we see some opportunity for as we go here. STEM is becoming, and more importantly, STEAM, you know, with the A in there for the fine arts, has been a focus point for us, and we're really trying to kind of bolster that programming around those areas. So, this is about our summer program. We have started our registration. We have our summer program, 10 weeks, from June 12th to August 19th at our Pitch location. We do see a good number of the Port students that come during the summer. It's 7:30 to 5:30. We serve breakfast, hot lunch, and afternoon snack for all kids. And this year, our theme is Summer of Extreme Steam. So, really trying to focus in on, you know, science, technology, engineering, arts, and the math. Some of the kind of things about our summer program, I mentioned, the meals that we serve. The last couple of years, we've seen about 200 kids a day. I would probably estimate about 20 to 25 of those kids are kids from Port Edwards that we see every day coming in from Pitch. We do reading and math programs during the summer. The summer learning loss is always an important concept to keep in mind, so we try to do intentional programming to make sure those kids are at least keeping the level that they end the school year with to be able to start the next school. There's statistics out there that, you know, talk about when you don't have that program during the summer, they're doing something, that gap that they kind of lose in that summer learning loss. So, some numbers there for you. Cost of our club, so, just last year, we increased our fees for the first time. It had been $10 a year for an annual membership, and looking at trying to generate a little more revenue, we thought we could increase our fees a little bit without running anybody out the door, or, you know, really putting a burden on families. And we've actually haven't seen a dip in any of our numbers from the increase in our fees. So, the $20 school-year membership and $100 for our 10-week summer program. We have scholarships or assistance, if you'll call it, that is based on free or reduced lunch. If kids have, get free lunch, they get 75% off of those membership fees, and if they have reduced lunch, it's 50% off. And ultimately, again, if they can't pay, we'll figure out a way to set up a payment plan. We allow parents to come in and volunteer to make up that time, or that, those fees. But we've been able to generate a little bit more revenue, but our national model tells us that we shouldn't be collecting anywhere in 10% of our annual revenue on our membership fees. So, we see about, with our membership increase, we'll see about $30,000 in our revenue from our membership fees on a $725,000 budget. So, not a big chunk. On the bottom, just a couple numbers for you. So, our actual cost per day per member is about $9 per child that we see. So, it's about $2,000 a kid for, if they would attend all of our program throughout the entire year. And then on the bottom, there's the cost of our Port Edwards program. It costs us roughly about $23,000 to run a program out here. So, just to give you some idea of how we are funded, we rely heavily on philanthropy in the community. You know, as I mentioned about our membership model, we don't get a lot from membership fees like the YMCA, for example. So, we rely on community support. We write grants. We, United Way is a big partner of ours. We have some endowment funds at Encouraged Community Foundation, and then working with local businesses to help support the kids. A lot of our contributions are for specific programs, but also we have some community appeals that we put out and really get some good generous support from our community, so it's really great to see that. So, our future plans, so we, we're at Pitch right now. Port Edwards, as, don't see that going anywhere. We're going to, we're going to stay in the school until you guys kick us out, and hopefully that never happens. So, our Pitch facility, our lease is actually scheduled to end next June of 2018. I do have a request out to kind of extend that if possible, because we are venturing down a road with a partnership with the YMCA to build a new collaborative building in our community, and we're trying to finalize some site acquisition pieces right now, and we're hoping by end of June, July, we can announce to the public and start our community phase for our capital campaign, with a hope to have a brand-new building towards the end of 2019. So, we're actually looking at the Rapids Mall. We're trying to acquire the mall, and then we would end up knocking it down and building a new building right there. So, that's, that's our number-one site, and there's another site on Highway 54 that we've looked at as well, but the downtown location is, is best for both organizations, and I think best for the community. So, that's where we're first spending our time to do our due diligence there. So, that's, that's kind of a overview of the club and what we've been doing. Does anybody have any questions about anything?
Wonderful program.
Thank you, thank you.
We are so fortunate that some of the kids that need it the most are the ones that are here after school. I mean, all kids, we have all, tons of kids that are here, and it just depends on the day and how long they're here, but we do have some kids that are here from after school till 6:00 at night, and they get the homework help they need, they get the snacks they need, they get the, you know, reinforcement and the fun uptime, upside playtime they need, and we're so fortunate to have Trish, who's our site director here. She is wonderful. We've had a great year with her.
I'm really gratified to hear that we're looking at the mall site. I've heard that's suggested by other people.
Yeah.
With the VA clinic there, and the Lowell Center there, and the community theater facility there. Those are all public entities that would combine well with both Y and U.
Yeah, absolutely.
And putting them all under one, on one site, under one connected umbrella is a fabulous idea.
Yeah, we're really excited about the opportunity that we have in front of us. You know, we're having, having some time with the folks that own the mall right now. They're not from our community, and, you know, they're, they're an investment group from out of California, so we've been negotiating with them back and forth. And our original plan was to purchase half the mall and knock it down and put our building where the Sophia's Restaurant and the gas station car wash. But most recently, we've begun to work with the city and some other folks to try to buy the whole entire mall, possibly move the VA into the J.C. Penney's building, and then position our building right between the Penny's Building and the Centralia Center. So, yes, absolutely, that would give us fantastic opportunities with both those populations.
You'd anticipate demoing most of the existing buildings?
Yes, we would demo, we would demo everything minus the J.C. Penney's building is kind of the current plan, based on what we can get worked out with the mall owners and coming to a compromise on the price.
We're first leaving Lowell Center and the community theater.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yep. And we've even, there's even been some conversation about, is there a way to attach that, you know, so we can kind of, it's just a hallway right down from one, one location to the next.
That would make sense.
Yeah, so, really excited about it, yeah. Yep, thank you, guys.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have a vibrant Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks for all the important work you do.
Of course, thank you, yep.
And I like the idea that you are involving some of the high school students with this program, right?
Yes, yes, we have high school students that come over here and work, and, you know, we are always open for volunteers to come over, you know, anytime we can bring some older role models for these younger kids over here, even, you know, the adults in our communities that have that positive influence is really important to get in front of those kids as well, so, yep.
Next item, questions and comments from people in attendance. No one signed up to address the board, is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Number nine, consider approval of minutes of the past meeting.
It's all moved to the second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of motion to approve the minutes of the past meeting. Say aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of financial reports. Is there any gifts?
Yes. So, we have four gifts to report, or three gifts, I'm sorry, three gifts to report. The Port Edwards Lions Club purchased, gave the district money to purchase a new audiometer to check on hearing, and so we are in the midst of procuring the new audiometer. Very generous donation from the Lions Club, and much-needed piece of equipment that is replacing some very outdated pieces of equipment. So, we're very thankful for that. Solaris annually has a Partners in Education program where they donate locally to all of the area schools, and we just received a $1,000 donation. We use that as a, it's, as they put it, it's to improve things that the students are doing or to invest in, in student activities. So, just to give you a couple of examples of how we've used this recently, we purchased new basketballs for the kids to use out at lunch, you know, at lunch recess. We purchased a book cart for kindergarten and first-grade students here that was at their level in the elementary building. Brought in a guest speaker with some of those funds. So, we try to use those funds to go right back into maybe some areas that we don't always have money for, but are really student-need areas, and that's kind of how Solaris has approached us, approached us with that. And then, we also have a donation from Ellen Regalia, three boxes, yeah, three boxes of Three box, yeah, three boxes of copy and construction paper. And then the baseball team assisted him with moving, with some moving, and then as a result, he made the donation, so.
I think that was great. I actually talked to his sister, and she said they were coming to help him. That was wonderful.
I think we already have cards going around.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the financial reports. Second. Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Unfinished business, there is none. New business. Number eleven, consider approval of health insurance plan for 2017, 2018, as discussed in both sessions.
Recommend the, the adoption of our health insurance plan, which would move us, basically, we, we keep the same insurance company, we keep the same in-network plan. We've moved to the HMO side of that plan with the option for employees to purchase the point-of-service plan at the rate of what the renewal was. By moving to the HMO plan, we stay at zero percent, and the employees could individually elect to purchase the point-of-service plan at the four percent renewal rate. Biggest difference there is in-network versus out-of-network under the HMO. Out-of-network is not covered unless you're referred out-of-network. And over the past two years of looking back at records, one year with the entire staff, and then looking back at staff that was previously covered under securities plan, ninety-nine point seven percent of all of our claims have been in-network. So it really gives the employees some choice, and it keeps the, keeps the costs down. So I recommend moving to that, as well as on the dental side of that. Looking at the dental side, moving to, the only change on the dental plan that we are looking at is to go to the eighty, eighty percent coverage on the crowns, inlays, denture work, bridge work side of that. If anybody's ever had that work, the way the dental side works, if you're covered under the dental, you have a thousand dollar yearly max. Now, if you get a crown or a bridge work done, it's likely it's gonna cost you more than a thousand. So the eighty, the eighty-twenty on that doesn't really make a big difference. Right now, it's covered to a hundred percent. We can keep the cost essentially the same on the renewal, so there'd be a zero renewal essentially if we just go to an eighty-twenty on that. Basically, once you hit, did the math at one point, I don't have it sitting in front of me, it was just a little over twelve hundred dollars. If you had twelve hundred dollars in bridge work, the thousand dollars was gonna get paid to you anyways. So, and most of those procedures are, it's gonna cost that.
And the HSA money can be used for dental as well as medical?
Yes, as far as I know.
Right. Seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Leo, seconded by Tracy. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I have to abstain.
Abstain. Kathy Epstein. Motion carried. All right, next item, consider approval of 2017, 2018 support staffing plan.
The plan we brought to you called for a reduction of sixteen point four, five hours in support staff time. That time is made up from across several categories between, and some of this is budgetarian savings between, between these categories, between aides, clerical, and so forth. So it would be a grand total of sixteen point four, five hours at this point is a reduction in those hours.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the support staffing plan.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion by Tracy, seconded by Kathy. Any other discussion? And all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
I would have a little vote.
Oh, yeah. Carrie, Carrie abstains. Next item, consider approval of non-resident pupil 2017, 2018 school year open enrollment application.
So we did receive our open enrollment applications. There were a couple of those on there that didn't, that they applied. We have to include them on the list. They really have to reapply, just a couple, but nothing, no expelled students, nothing, nothing to raise eyebrows that way. So I'd recommend that you approve the open enrollment applications. That's a little ahead of last year on this.
For numbers?
For numbers. And at no grade level did we exceed the caps that were set. However, we met the cap at one grade level. So I believe that was the ninth grade, we met the cap at the ninth grade, but.
Current eighth grade, right?
Yep, but there were no, no levels that we exceeded, so there may be some opportunity for the alternative open enrollment. Once summer comes, we'll get that information out as that happens.
Do the people on this list, by and large, are new?
There is a couple that are not. I can't get into the specifics, just in the open meeting, obviously, because we're talking individuals, but there are a couple that didn't need to reapply that did. So the list isn't, it's not quite as big as it seems by two students, I think. Okay, two or three students, so. But then everybody else would be new for the most part.
All right, seek a motion of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kathy, seconded by Leo. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of 2017, 2018 lunch, breakfast, and milk prices.
So one of the things we get to do each year is to raise those prices. We should be charging according to the USDA, our current top rate, or our current rate should be around the two dollars and seventy-eight cents rate, we're not there. However, we are only allowed to increase by ten cents a year. So if the USDA changes the rate, we never catch up. So, but, so the prices for this year, we'd move elementary from two dollars and thirty to two dollars and forty, middle school, two forty-five to two fifty-five, and high school from two fifty to two sixty, and the adult prices as well going up. And then a recommendation to also increase those breakfast prices by ten cents as well. And we do, we have to actively work to get up to that two dollars and seventy-eight cents level until they change it and raise it, and then we'll have to work to get up to whatever the new level is. So, and that's on the lunch side.
All right, seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second to approve the lunch, breakfast, and milk prices. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Next item, consider approval of sixty-six oh three agreement.
Yep, I would just recommend approval of the sixty-six oh three regarding a student that you have in your board packet. That will be, it only runs through the end of this year, and it's a student, the student already has the sixty-six oh three. It's basically amending it to run through the end of this year, based on the services being provided, so. You actually had this on your agenda last month. You tabled it, so, and I now recommend you pass it.
Entertain a motion to approve. Second. Motion by Tracy, seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Opportunity of individual board member comment. Kathy.
It was a fantastic concert last night. Really, really fun to see, and the kids seemed to be really having a good time, enjoying themselves. And today, I had kind of snuck in on the P organization that was taking a tour of Mr. Bruno's shop. He had told me that they were gonna be there, and he said, if you want to come over, just join us. I was totally amazed with that machine out there and what it can do. It's awesome, so. The students did a good job explaining everything, so it was really nice.
All right, Leo.
There's a new organization in our area called the Central Wisconsin Public Education Network. This is a group of interested people, some of them board members, some of them educators, some of them retired, some of them parents, who are interested in supporting, advocating for, and promoting public education. I would encourage any parents from the district, or any staff members from the district who are so interested, to contact either Mrs. McGrath or myself, as we both are members, and regularly attempt to, to attend the meetings. We meet monthly, usually for about an hour. I just think it's another vehicle for people to be able to advocate and support public schools.
Very good.
Carrie. I guess I'd just like to comment a little bit on what Kyle mentioned with the, some of the kids and their achievements. Proves again that our teachers do a very nice job here of preparing these kids to excel and be ready for the next step, whether it is college, or tech school, or other, so. And then the, the information on the Boys and Girls Club, I think a lot of our kids have taken advantage of that program throughout the years, and it's a really nice program, and it's good to see that it's so vibrant yet.
I wanna say the same with, Carrie said, on the Boys and Girls Club, that's actually on my mail route, their building is, and I get to see that every day, all the kids just doing their thing, and everybody being so organized. And I love how he outlined all that stuff for us, because people don't, don't quite know all the details with the Boys and Girls Club. And I think it's, it's very important that everybody knows that they don't, they don't turn anybody away for like financial need or whatever. And I want to encourage everybody to go to the, the spring, I don't know, was it talent show thing?
If they have it.
If they have it, if they have it. It's neat when the community is all like joining together, and the kids usually have a lot of fun stuff for us to see.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I'd just like to commend Kyle on the way you approached the catastrophe in the gym floor and everything. You did it professionally and on time, and it was unexpected, of course, and brought all the information to us, and we were able to sit down and make a decision and hopefully get it right this time, and, yeah, so, well done. Okay, next item was establish future board meetings. It's a June fourteenth and July nineteenth. Do we wanna do August?
Usually you put August a little later.
Yeah.
Because of, just in case we have things we need to get finalized with the beginning of the school year.
It'll be gone in early August, so that would be a plus for me.
August, the next date in August, if we look at that, that third Wednesday, it'd be August sixteen, so.
You wanna go a week later yet?
Uh, no.
That's too close.
That probably almost gets us too close. It would be, it, you know, but sixteen, let's try to shoot for that. The, the other piece I have on there, I did add policy review meeting dates. So Mr. Lavalley and I have a meeting on the policy rewrite with, through Neola, and we've already met for four hours, and we have another meeting scheduled in about a week and a half, and we'll probably put in about another four hours, and we'll be about, maybe a little over a third of the way through all of the policy. His recommendation was that the board write this off in small segments, because, for instance, right now, in the board's policy one-hundred section, I think there's four or five policies in the one-hundreds, you're gonna end up replacing that with about forty policies. I, I mean, there's, it's quite significant, this rewrite. And it's covering things that are very prudent for the board to be covering. And so his thought process and what he suggested, and what other boards that he has seen done, what we would do is do first readings over the course of two or three special meetings. So you would do, we would set a goal of, we're gonna review all of the one thousand and two thousand series of policies, and that would be the first reading. And it would just simply be a read-through and a review. You're a read-through and a review, if you have questions, concerns, we could take that note, come back later and look at those. And then at a board meeting, later, probably mid to late summer, and maybe, if we can, maybe July, not August, the board would basically do a second reading and adoption of all policy, along with you actually have to rescind your old policy. So, and we are working in, there are specific, what I would say, Port Edwards policies that really pertain to us and what the board has written over the years, that don't pertain to any other board, it's just unique things. So we're working to continue to keep those things in policy. But again, adding things that are required by law, adding things that are usually prudent for the protection of the district. So, with that thought process being, there's probably gonna be three, maybe four of these review meetings, and then a final adopt, a final rescinding the current policy manual and replacing it in a second reading with the new policy manual. We could start that, again, I meet with him on the twenty-third, we could start that anytime after the twenty-third, and I would probably schedule like two hours at a shot. That way, everybody keeps their sanity. I would get those policies out to you ahead of time, so that you can see them, we could review and go over them, and then if you had questions, we'd get back to figure it out, so.
These meetings would be typical board time?
Yeah, it'd probably be a special meeting to do a first reading of, I would figure out how much policy we could.
Section one, two, three, and so on.
Yeah, some, yeah.
So like in early June?
Yeah, otherwise, the other option is doing like eight hours, doing like a day, and getting all googly-eyed at the end of the day, because you're still gonna look at a policy, but we could do it, we could try to do the first reading as an entire day, but that, that might get onerous. But, I mean, it'll take, it's significant, so for you to, for me to walk you through those, it's gonna take some time. You wanna try us?
Is there anybody who wants to do this in one whack?
No.
Anyone, anyone? Okay, well, that checks good.
And the second reading, keep in mind, is a very, you've already seen the policies, the second reading is, did we fix any things from that first reading? Did we change anything? What was it? And you can adopt at that point. So it's second reading and an adoption, so.
Okay, well, why don't we look at like mid-June for the first one? And we've been gathering two, three weeks throughout the summer, or, I don't know.
And if we can, maybe we can try to get this done in three of these. I mean, I can.
You're looking at a separate meeting back-to-back with the regular?
I mean, we could do it on the board meeting night and just say, okay, we'll, we'll grab, we'll, I'll get, get a little bit of food so we can have a little light dinner, and then we just go into a policy reading session. And that's possible, too. I mean, he, that's as well.
I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I know it's.
The June board meeting is long, but.
June fourteenth, and I will not be here.
Fourteenth. You certainly would have access to those and could throw questions.
So you're saying you vote for us to do with the first review of June fourteen?
I think you should do eight hours.
As long as we're here for the board meeting.
I mean, you wanna, you wanna just?
I would, I would, I would like to do it.
Be like from seven to nine or so?
Yeah.
Just pick up at the end of the regular June board meeting to start?
And we can see how that goes. And then if you, at that point, I might have three meetings in with Steve, and so you might have a lot of policy that you could potentially get through. And I, and I guess it really goes at the pace that you wanted to go at that point. What Steve and I are doing is going through and determining what fits and what doesn't for our culture, for the district, in terms of just answering some simple questions. Yeah, I'll, I'll just give you an example. One of them was very simply, who opens the annual meeting? The superintendent or the board president? There's policy on that, and there needs, there really should be.
Actually, the board clerk is supposed to.
Well, there's, actually, there's just different choices. Well, there's, actually, there's just different choices, and so you could do it a bunch of ways, so it's, but that's just.
It's gonna take a long time.
But that's just an example of some of the stuff that we're having to go through that currently isn't in policy that we're codifying.
Some of the stuff, some of the stuff is genuinely serious and requires a lot of paid attention.
Yes, absolutely.
Some of it is procedural, and we can go through it relatively quickly.
Yep, yep.
I'm hoping.
Yep, there, there will be both. You'll, you'll be hit with both, so.
You want to start June 14th, or?
I would say so.
Okay, we will, why don't we, we'll put that on as an addition at the end to do, it'll be open session, it'll be, it'll be literally, I will have it up on the, we'll put it up on the computer, and we'll just go through it, so.
It'll be open.
Yeah, it's open session, it's.
Need to schedule a second meeting so we can be sure to include Mrs. McGrath.
Yeah, so, okay.
Listen, I'm going to portage for you guys.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Did you forget about that?
You just, you just took care of your 14th. Okay, okay. Our debt, our debt is paid.
Okay.
Okay, next item, consider a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85. Motion by Kathy, seconded by Tracy. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're in closed session.